I will now call the meeting to order. Those of you that are here, thank you so much. Those that are watching at home, thanks.
Good evening. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Would everyone please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings here in Brownsville. Tonight, we specifically ask for divine wisdom for our mayor, our city commissioners, our city manager, and all the management team. Show us clearly what the far-reaching effects of each of our decisions will be. And Lord God, we ask you to continue to bring us to truth while protecting the unity that we have here. And we thank you so much. We ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Next, we have a proclamation. Proclamation for National Astronomy Week. If you would please come to the front.
So, I'll read it. Proclamation of the City -- this is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating October 5th through the 11th of 2019 as Astronomy Week. Whereas astronomy day is a worldwide event observed each fall and spring, on astronomy day, thousands of people who have never looked through a telescope will have an opportunity to see firsthand what has so many amateur and professional astronomers all excited. Astronomy clubs, science museums, observatories, universities, planetariums, laboratories, libraries, and nature centers pose special events and activities to acquaint their population with local astronomical resources and facilities. Whereas on Saturday, May 5th, 2018, the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley held the official dedication of the Dr. Christina V. Torres Memorial Astronomical Observatory at Resaca de la Palma State Park in Brownsville. Whereas the Dr. Christina Torres Memorial Observatory and the South Texas Astronomy Society support the growth of public interest in observing South Texas skies from the Rio Grande Valley by providing access to expert support and high-quality telescope viewing. Whereas on Saturday, October 5th, 2019, the South Texas Astronomy Society and the Dr. Christina V. Torres Memorial Astronomical Observatory, in collaboration with the Brownsville Public Library SAVMOS Branch, will host the International Observe the Moon Night as part of a worldwide celebration of lunar science and exploration, celestial observation, and our cultural and personal connections to the moon. Whereas on Saturday, September 28th, 2019, SpaceX founder Elon Musk held a Starship Update in Brownsville, Texas, leading the eyes of the world to our community. And whereas the City of Brownsville supports and encourages the study of astronomy in our community, and has launched a New Space Brownsville Campaign to create a new space ecosystem. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby designate October 5th through the 11th, 2019, as Astronomy Week. And further encourage the citizens of Brownsville to celebrate wonder and discovery of the skies through the field of science, technology, math, and engineering for future exploration and imagination. Done on this day, the first day of October, 2019.
Now, you're good there.
Well, I am gratified to receive this from the city, especially from Noura, that I've known since she was a little girl. The group here with me is instrumental in bringing astronomy to Brownsville. It's kind of languished for a while, but with new interest and new energy, we're planning on doing many more outreach opportunities for the citizens of Brownsville and the valley, and we look forward to seeing you there. And we hope you enjoy your lithograph from NASA of the solar system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please, I do encourage people to go out on October 5th from 4:00 to 6:00 to the SAVMOS Public Library at the observatory. They will be having a program to see the moon during the day.
Next, we have Dr. Balsharma. If you would please come up.
So, this next proclamation is very important, not only to honor Dr. Sharma, but today is October 1st, which kicks off the first day of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And although Dr. Sharma is not only a doctor that serves breast cancer patients, he serves all types of oncology patients here in Brownsville. It is very important, and we admire Dr. Sharma for the work he does for early detection. And so, it being October, I also encourage all women and everybody out there to get their breast cancer screening this month. And I really wanted to bring Dr. Sharma here to honor him today because he is the only person in Brownsville that does what he does. And there is almost a 40% chance that a person will get cancer during their lifetime, some type or form of it. And we know that those statistics are only going up. So, we are so grateful to Dr. Sharma for his work and for being who he is in the community, and most importantly, for being a beacon of hope for so many that, you know, are diagnosed and have this hopeless outcome until they find a doctor who is going to treat them and cure them the way that Dr. Sharma does. So, thank you for being here. It is truly admirable that you've chosen Brownsville. So, I'll begin. Proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Balsharma, medical doctor. Whereas according to the National Cancer Institute, in 2016, there is an estimated 15.5 million cancer survivors in the United States. The number of cancer survivors is expected to increase to $20.3 million by -- million dollars, million people by 2026. Approximately 38.4% of men and women will be diagnosed with cancer some point during their lifetime, based on 2013 to 2015 data. Whereas, Dr. Sharma received his medical doctorate at Delhi University in New Delhi, India, in 1990, where he also completed his residency in anesthesia and critical care in 1991. He completed his medical internship at Lincoln Medical Center in New York in 1992 and 93. Dr. Sharma completed his residency in internal medicine at St. Vincent's Medical Center in affiliation with Yale University School of Medicine, Connecticut. In 1998, he completed a fellowship in hematology and oncology from the University of Texas Southwestern Medical Center in Dallas, and has been in private practice since then. Whereas, Dr. Sharma was drawn to the community of Brownsville to provide specialized care for the growing community of Brownsville. Dr. Sharma focused in providing a platform to fulfill his professional calling and develop a sense of home in Brownsville after immigrating from India to the beautiful weather, beaches, beach access, and above all, very warm, affectionate residence. Whereas, Dr. Sharma is a trained hematologist oncologist who helps people with a wide range of conditions relating to cancers and blood disorders. Dr. Sharma was inspired to become an oncologist after his mother was diagnosed with kidney cancer when he was a medical student. This experience led him to help people with cancer and gave him the strength to identify with them and provide care with compassion and humility. Whereas, Dr. Sharma actively supports such community activities like Race for the Cure, Beyond the Shock, Relay for Life, golf tournaments for fundraising and raising awareness for the importance of early detection in cancer. Screening tests and early detection reduces the death rates from certain cancers. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Dr. Balsharma, medical doctor in Brownsville, Texas, and further encourage our community to join in activities to increase awareness of the benefits of early cancer detection and prevention. Done on this first day of October, 2018. Congratulations.
I would like to thank the City Commission, the mayor, and Commissioner Jessica DeZru, and Commissioner Hual Mungia, and other esteemed members of the commission, officials of the City of Brownsville, for this honor. I am very humbled to accept this award. It is indeed a privilege to serve the people of this city. Oncology has been my window into the lives of the very special individuals in this city. It occurs to me that when faced with difficult conditions, like the ones I see day-to-day, this community shows its true self to me. It is humbling that my patients trust me and make themselves vulnerable to me, and admire, and I admire, the strength they and their families summon when they come to visit me. The work I have done is all in their honor. Those truly brave ones. It is my privilege of my life to be a small part of this story. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Next, we do have the public comment period. I did have one person sign up, for the record. Her name is Miss Kayla Hernandez. She did not state what she wished to speak to the commission about, nor did she want to come up and speak at this meeting. But she did turn in a public comment form.
Okay, so she's not here? She's not going to speak for today?
No.
Okay.
But just for the record, she submitted a public comment form.
All right. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Okay.
At this time, we are going to move Agenda Item Number 10, so that we could -- I'll read it. Consideration and action to approve the audit and oversight committee bylaws?
Do we need a motion, counsel, to take it out of order?
I don't believe so, as long as it meets with the approval of the committee.
That's fine. Does anybody object to this at all? Okay.
Item Number 10 is being presented by the City Attorney's Office, and we're seeking consideration and action to approve the audit and oversight committee bylaws for the newly recreated committee. As you all know, a few weeks back, this commission decided to recreate this committee in order to provide auditing services for the city and provide oversight over its many departments over the span of the, I don't know about it, six weeks, eight weeks. We've been meeting mostly during our lunchtimes and working as hard as we can to try to produce this for the commission to approve and to serve the document that will serve as a founding document for this committee in serving the city structure and the citizens of the city of Brownsville. I was tasked mainly with catching ideas, providing legal advice, and producing these, which is in your packets. These documents are in your packet today. And I did want to point out a couple of things. The documents that you have before you are strongly based on auditing standard models. They do follow guidelines and guidance from the Institute of Internal Auditors International. Along with that, many hours and ideas from the newly appointed members in order to come up with a fair document to present to the commission, in order to give good working guidelines to this committee and to these departments that will be functioning under the city structure. I'm asking that this honorable commission approve the bylaws as presented tonight.
So, I would just add, for the benefit of everyone here, and as well as the public, that no one on the committee missed a meeting. We met completely every single time. We looked at best practices from other cities and policies from other cities, both in the valley and outside the valley. And we had the benefit of the insight of the auditor from Breeden McCumber, who was familiar with who we are. So, it's a document that really represents a great deal of work.
My understanding is the auditor from Breeden McCumber actually volunteered their tongue?
He did.
That's great.
I'm really happy to see this, and I don't want to delay anything. I just want to see if we can get some clarification on Section 6.02 Oversight.
Yes, Commissioner. What is your question?
Yeah. One of them is under 602.1, and then A, C, and D, you start referring to internal audit activity, but you don't refer to it anywhere else. So, if you clarify that to make it more uniform, so there's not confusion that there's two different things going on. You talked about in A, internal audit and oversight committee, but I think you're talking about what's called just in general, the audit and oversight committee. I mean, it's kind of picky, but it just creates a little confusion.
Are you referring to Number 6 under Control or 6.02 Oversight?
6.02.
Okay.
It's just, you know, it's just that you can make it uniform when you refer to it throughout the --
Yes. And what we did, Commissioner, I'm an attorney by trade, not an auditor, and many of the terms contained herein are, like some of our legal terms have, you know, there's an art to them. We learned, at least I learned, that in order to have a perfectly functioning auditing and oversight committee, it would take not only internal audit, but also external audit, implementing the results and recommendations of these audits, and creating the ability for the committee to be able to enforce recommendations, tasks from this commission, and providing a mechanism that will allow us both internally and externally to have common measures to make sure that these are implemented in benefit to the benefit of the city.
There is a separate committee called the Internal Audit and Oversight, the Internal Audit and Oversight Committee.
Okay.
Is there? I mean, that's my question.
No. There's one committee under this structure. It's only one committee. However, as you know, and I think you pointed out in the past, our Book of ordinances and our founding documents make reference to a city auditor position or office that doesn't exist. This brings everything under the tree. It allows for the creation of that office, the integration of the committee with the city auditor's office under this commission, directly under this commission. And it allows to have guidance and oversight over both outside auditors, inside auditors, the auditor's office, the functionings and recommendations of the committee, which at the end of the day will all be presented to this commission.
I get all that. I get all that. It's just that you're making references, it looks like, to two different audit and oversight committees. The one that's the main one, and then now there's an internal audit and oversight. So, I'm just saying that maybe a little clarification there that it's the same.
Yeah. That language was taken straight from the model document that we acquired from the National Auditing Standards.
So, this is one audit and oversight?
There's one audit and oversight.
Not a separate internal audit and oversight?
No. But there will be internal audit that will be conducted, as well as external audit. So, yes, there's a difference between internal and the outside auditors, but all on the one committee.
So, the city auditor is going to be in charge of the internal audit process, right?
Yes.
Internal audit activity. And then moving on to Number 2.
Really quickly, Ben, before you go on, I just want to clarify something. So, the committee itself is Audit and Oversight Committee, but my understanding is that the actual position, that the auditor position is actually an internal auditor. Am I correct?
Yes, we're creating the --
Called the city auditor.
Yes.
Are they city auditor or internal auditor?
No. What we're going to have is a city auditor's office.
Okay.
Which will control both the inside auditors and the outside auditors.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. And then going to Number 2, you start talking about the external auditors, but you just say we'll meet with the external assurance providers, but where do they come from? Is the City Commission going to engage them, or is the committee going to engage them? In other words, you might want to consider putting something in there about how, where do they appear into this process?
The way that it was envisioned by the committee commissioner is that as soon as this office is created, they're going to, the city auditor will create a working plan along with this committee that will give guidelines as to what internal processes are the city's going to have. And the, as you're aware, there are some times where outside auditing is a proper venue.
So, how do they, who picks the external auditors? The city auditor, the A&amp;O committee, or the commission says, here's your internal auditor to work with this guy?
This document ambitions another working document that will be hopefully addressed with whoever the city --
Through the A&amp;O committee?
Correct. The committee's going to, we're about to advertise to the position of city auditor. We're hoping to bring in a qualified person that meets all the criteria that the city's looking for. And what we wanted to do is have the creation of a second document that will answer your questions. Now, all those documents will be worked in conjunction with the committee, however, they'll be presented to this commission for approval.
So, the second document is like an MOU or a contract with the external auditor?
It will create the guidelines into which external auditors are brought in, and how the working conditions are going to occur. What we didn't want to do, and it's something that we did discuss, well, the committee, not me, but the committee, they wanted to make sure that when this person came in, we received input from our now-city auditor in order to create proper guidelines for assessing when internal versus external are to be committed.
Okay. So, I'm just trying to figure out how the external auditors is selected.
We haven't gotten that far. This document gives birth to this committee and allows our ability to meet, to hire the auditor, and to create the processes as we want possible.
Commissioner Gowan, do you have any input on that?
I did have one more. I think it's a typo. Renee, on page 1, the Audit and Oversight Committee will consist of, I believe we discussed, no fewer than three and no more than five. But it says five.
That is something we did, that is something with some of the members. I thought it was five, but if --
It should be no fewer than three and a maximum of five. In other words, we don't want the audit, the committee, the committee to be, maybe there's not a fifth person that meets, you know, the criteria or whatever, or maybe the internal auditor has different ideas or input that he or she wants to put in. So, we wanted to give that wiggle room for no more than three and no more than five. No fewer than three and no more than five.
I would agree with that. And would it be at the discretion of the internal auditor to decide what that board consists of?
No, I think that will be up to this commission.
Working together with the auditor and the committee.
In that case, I request that this commission consider voting on the item, subject to that change.
I have one more. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have one more question. So, I'm reading the, I'm reading the bylaws that I received yesterday, and the authority and the scope of what this audit committee will do. It's to focus on city government, or is that also to have oversight of commission members?
No. This document, this committee strictly to audit the city structure. That means city officers, such as the city manager myself, department heads, and employees. That is the main thrust of this. Now, under Section 5, Article 5, Section 19, there are special investigation powers that lie with this commission, and that you all will be delegating to this committee. However, those are also under the same parameters. It's for city officers and for city employees. I don't believe we have any instance in our Book of ordinances or our charter that allows investigation of the commission for the --
Does Section 21 allow it?
No. That is a, that is a section that allows the city manager some investigation powers and perhaps even subpoena powers, but Section 21 does not allow it.
I would request that there might be clarification, just to make it clear, so that there's an issue, if it could be done.
We actually discussed that particular issue, and the committee understood that that was a question yet to be answered, but it was not a clear, there was still information and precedent that we needed to look at. So, it's not part of this document. That doesn't mean that it won't eventually be part of this document, but at this point, it's not. But the committee is aware of the question. The other thing I would add is that it's the committee's hope that, and I believe of this commission as well, that this would then eventually become a document that would go in to the voters to change the charters, to make it as a permanent part of the charter, so that an audit and oversight committee cannot be undone in the future.
I would agree with that.
How do you distinguish then, city officers not being city commissioners, and it's only then executive staff or city staff?
The way our charter is written, and the way our Book of ordinances is written, there's only a couple of sections that have definitions or that define who's what. There is no such item in our charter. There is one in our Book of ordinances that clearly states that all mentions, on all mentions of city commission, city Brownsville commission, means exactly that, city commission. And all other references to officials are city officials and others mean exactly that. All people under the structure of the city government, which would be from the city manager, the city auditor, all the way down to every single one of them.
If I'm correct, there was even a lawsuit that once took the city commission to court that city commissioners were not entitled to payroll, were not entitled to health insurance, and other things that all other city staff are entitled to, because we are a separate entity.
I'm not aware, but I think that happened before. I think I came up with --
Long before you were here.
Yes, but I'll be looking to, I'll be happy to look into it.
Yes. It's defined.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is that going to be subject to?
Subject to the change in, on page 1.
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gowan.
And Cowan.
And Commissioner Cowan.
Gowan and Cowan.
As well as Frank O'Dosco, the third member of that committee, and the other members of that committee for all their work. Counsel, thanks as well for drafting these. I really appreciate the work that everybody did, and I'm excited to get this off the ground. Thank you.
The next agenda item that we have is the work session for the taxi cab ordinance.
Nice new badge. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of our commission. Today, it's simple why we're here. The reason is we want to establish and begin talks in regards to innovating, changing, and what's importantly consolidating our ordinance governing vehicles for hire within our city. 106, it governs taxi cabs within our city. There are, all we're seeking right now is your thoughts and input in regards to what it is that you may want to see changed in it as we move along in working out an innovation, any change to the ordinance itself.
I think we need to look at, first of all, implementing technology as much as possible. I mean, obviously, apps and that sort of technology has kind of disrupted the whole industry as far as ride shares and taxi cabs. So, I think we need to look at implementing that, because Uber and Lyft both have a presence in Brownsville. And, you know, there is people that are taking advantage of that service. I think you need to look at regulating that taxi cabs themselves, making sure that the equipment is up-to-date, functional, and that there's some sort of fare that applies across the board. I also think you need to maybe consider, you know, the drivers themselves and the automobiles that are used, certain standards. Look at other cities. I really don't know what other cities do, but that might be a good start.
And we have an ordinance that currently stipulates all those different reference points that you've brought up. It's something that we can definitely look to innovate and change and make it more modern or make it more feasible to what it is that you all want.
Do you know if our current ordinance still has a provision that was requiring all taxis to be painted white? Remember that, back in the '90s or something? If it's in there, I'd ask it would be.
Yeah, that's been removed, sir.
It's been removed?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. What about the number? Is there some sort of numbers to how many can actually participate?
125 across 14 different companies.
Okay. I don't know whether that's an issue enough. You may want to evaluate that.
So, one of the things that I had concerns about is that the permitting process for them. I just feel that there should be standards, but I also feel that with the arrival of Uber and Lyft and all of this other competition that has come about since the last time this ordinance was reworked, that maybe we could just look at things that don't need to be there and maybe be more lenient. Because I know that -- Um, 'cause I know that there are a lot of things that the Uber and Lyft drivers don't have to do that our cab drivers do. Um, that's just my two cents, just to level the playing field.
Also, Chief, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think there's multiple permits required for different facilities, bus, terminal, airport.
Yes, sir.
May wanna look at possibly consolidating that if possible, trying to make that more efficient.
Also, just as a special note, there, there's a hundred and twenty-five permitted permities. There's only forty-four taken up.
Okay.
Let us know when we hit capacity.
Right. Over here.
Well, as we continue to grow, there'll be more, more demand for that. I just think we're trying to get out ahead of it. It hasn't been looked at in a while.
Yes, sir.
I wanna make it more business friendly, especially, bless you, God bless you, to the cab drivers who have had so many obstacles and challenges with the ride share.
Absolutely.
Here in our community.
Then certainly, Chief, look at the public safety aspect, of course.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Anybody else have any input? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have consent agenda items.
You have any motions?
I'll move to approve, um, and just to make sure that it waits with your changes that I requested.
I was gonna say, it's subject to the changes that have been made?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve subject to the changes on the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have the public hearings. Public hearing number one, public hearing in action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero eighty-seven to consider approving the financing of a bond by Arlington Higher Education Finance Corporation for the benefit of the Hano Center for Community Concerns Incorporated for purposes of section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city commissioners. Uh, I'm gonna introduce Jay Juarez with McCall Park, Parker and Horton to go over this item.
Thank you, Lubid. Uh, good evening, mayor, city commission. Uh, as Lubid mentioned, my name is Jay Juarez. I'm an attorney with the law firm of McCall, Parker, St. Horton. Uh, we have the privilege of serving as the city's bond counsel and we have for a number of years. My mentor, Tom Spurgeon, unfortunately was unable to make it here tonight. Uh, he wishes he could be here. I believe he's represented the city since about nineteen ninety-two as their bond counsel. Uh, with that said, I'd like to start off by emphasizing that this action item creates absolutely no legal or financial obligation to repay any debt. Um, it's strictly a matter of complying with the federal tax law to allow the Arlington issuer to issue its own tax debt on a tax exempt basis. Uh, so some background on, uh, the financing. The Arlington issuer is the Arlington Higher Education Finance Corporation, and it is looking to issue approximately twenty-six point five, uh, twenty-five point six million dollars of tax exempt tax note for the benefit of the Hano Center for Community Concerns, uh, which would be the borrower. Uh, the borrower operates a nonprofit, uh, open enrollment charter school, uh, here in Brownsville and also in Houston. Uh, the Brownsville campus is located at twenty-two fifty-five North Coria, and the proceeds of the tax note, uh, would be used to defees, redeem, refinance, uh, and finance, uh, certain improvements to both the Houston and the Brownsville campus. Now, because this note will be considered a private activity bond under the federal tax code, and because a portion of the proceeds will be used to finance or refinance a facility for a private entity that's located, located in Brownsville, in order for the note to be issued on a tax exempt basis, there are a couple of prerequisites that the federal tax law requires. The first of those is that a public hearing is held by the host city, being the city of Brownsville. The city of Houston is also doing the same thing since a portion of those proceeds are gonna benefit the city of Houston. Um, and the second is that the city commissioner, I mean, the, the city's mayor acting on his own, or the city commission take action to approve the note and the project being financed or refinanced. Uh, again, the city's approval of the resolution does not create any legal or financial obligation to repay the note, and the documents the city commission is being asked to consider this evening, along with the financing documents by, uh, to be approved by the Arlington issuer, are both very clear to that effect. Uh, so we've coordinated with your staff and administration for posting notice of the public hearing on your all's website, as required by, uh, the federal tax provisions applicable to this, um, and it's been posted since September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, with that said, in order to further comply with federal tax law relating to the issuance of tax exempt obligations, we would respectfully request that the commission open a public hearing as required by one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six for the purpose of discussing, discussing the note and the project in Brownsville to be financed, refinanced or constructed by the borrower. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, we would request that the time of the hearing is concluded to be announced openly and that action be taken to approve the resolution.
Okay. Um, uh, anybody here on this item?
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion to close public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right.
I'll note that it's five thirty-seven since you asked that the time be noted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we still need the motion, though.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? I do have a question. Was there any discussion with our, um, financial advisor or, or counsel or other financial folks on this at all, just to run through it, just to make sure there's no issues?
It was, uh, run by, uh, your, your administration, your internal administration.
Okay.
But really, there's absolutely no legal or financial obligation to repay this debt whatsoever.
Okay. All right.
I have a quick question that's come. Does anybody know what the Hano Center for Community Concerns does? Like, maybe a community member wants to go talk to them or something?
Is it a DBA?
Is, I'm sorry?
Is it a DBA or are they doing business as a, under a name? 'Cause I've never heard of this place.
Let's see, let me look into it.
I know we even Googled it and we still couldn't find clarification during the agenda review.
It says, are you all familiar with the Raoul Izaguirre School for Success Project?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
That's what it is?
Head start?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Motion to approve?
Uh, we already had a motion and a second. We were in discussion. So any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number two, consideration and action to accept a routine maintenance grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Texas Department of Transportation for projects at the, projects at the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Good evening, honorable mayor and commissioners. Uh, this is a TechDoc grant that we get annually to help defray some of our maintenance costs. Fifty thousand dollars, we're requesting that you accept this.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number three, consideration and action to award supplemental agreement number two, task order number two to Garber LLC for the terminal project at the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Um, in discussions with our contractor and with our designer, we elected to, um, try and pursue adding a couple of components. One of them, we came and we got approval for, I believe, the, uh, commercial curb canopy, which had been removed from the project early on in design. And then we also had to repackage some of the, uh, design components to, we, to do an RFP for concessions. And then finally, we also had to redo some drawings to, uh, increase the functionality of our parking booth and add a restroom out there for our parking attendants. So, uh, total price here is about seventy-five thousand six hundred and fifty, not to exceed. Uh, we're asking to increase the project by that much for this purpose.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number four, consideration and action to award task order number four to Garber LLC for the bidding phase of the terminal apron at the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Um, this item is, uh, part of the construction project that was not awarded to the contractor, um, based on funding. Uh, we're pursuing additional funding with the FAA. To do that, we need current costs, so we have to repackage and rebid the air, the airside phase of the project, which is technically separate from the terminal project itself. Uh, the repackaging, rebidding of this is about eighty-eight thousand dollars roughly, um, and we're asking to be able to do that so we can get better numbers.
And the intent is to pursue some of this with the FAA?
We have to have the bidding package, or we have to have the bid numbers in for the FAA to attach to their grant award. So, we've been working with the FAA. They're anticipating this grant request. They're anticipating fulfilling it, uh, but we do have to do the bid before we can get to that point.
If not awarded by FAA, do we have to pay?
I'm sorry?
If not awarded by the FAA, do we have to pay?
Oh, if it's not, if, if the FAA doesn't participate, or if they don't want to fund the project or anything, then yeah, this would, we would be on the hook for this completely ourselves.
Okay.
What is the, what is the apron? What is that?
Uh, the apron's the parking area of the aircraft right up against the terminal. So, to be able to...
Like a jet bridge?
No, no, the jet bridges are, it's complicated, but yes, they're, they're included in the apron area.
Similar, right?
It's in the back, it's on the backside if you're looking at it from the front, and it has a lot to do with concrete work, right?
Correct.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
So we didn't, so we originally did get bids on this, um, but the bids are no longer valid. They're only good for sixty days, I think. Uh, the contractor gave us a ninety-day extension. We're well past that at this point, so to actually be able to apply, uh, which the FAA is anticipating, uh, to help us fund that, so, but just to, to apply, we have to bid it out again and get better, you know, more accurate numbers.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Action item number five, consideration and action to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority and the city of Brownsville for the Old Dallas Road project in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for preliminary engineering from the twenty-twelve Certificates of Obligation Fund.
Good evening, mayor, city commissioners. Uh, prior to the RGB MPO, the Brownsville MPO Policy Committee approved a modification, uh, to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan to maximize, uh, a DOT opportunity for using a higher letting cap for the category fund, uh, category seven funding. Uh, this would allow for the acceleration of certain qualifying, uh, projects. Uh, the Old Alice project was approved as part of the MTP modification as a partnership between the city of Brownsville and the CCRMA. The city's portion of the preliminary engineering cost is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and is to be paid from twenty-twelve Certificates of Obligations. Uh, staff recommends approval of the interlocal agreement between the city, uh, Brownsville and the CCRMA for the Old Alice overall project. Uh, Mr. Pizza Pulvera with, uh, CCRMA is here if you have any questions.
As I understand it, though, what we're doing is we're, we're kinda fronting the money. We're, we're getting out ahead of this, and by putting this money up now, we're able to accelerate the project. Am I correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I know city managers explained this to me a lot more eloquently than I think I just said it.
And the three hundred and fifty thousand is to cover the engineering cost, but then the actual construction will be multiple millions, right? And, but, and which will then be covered by TechDoc?
Correct. For the record, Pizza Pulvera, City Director of the CCRMA. Um, the, the project limits, uh, will be from State Highway one hundred in Los Fresnos to the Sports Park Boulevard. Um, and we currently have, um, in the now RGB MPO, fifteen point five million dollars to cover the construction, uh, for that, that, uh, project limit. Um, so what this will, uh, allow us to do is to expedite the engineering. Um, the RMA is doing the environmental document in-house. Uh, we, we've already done the traffic studies that are required by TechDoc. Uh, we're working on the cultural resources that are required, uh, to go through the NIPA process, um, and, uh, we're working with, um, Corps of Engineers. Uh, there, there probably will be some mitigation required on wetlands, uh, but the RMA is covering that. And so this funding, uh, Cameron County has already committed to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will, um, help us get the amount needed to do the engineering. So if, if we get this funding from the city, we can have the project under construction probably a year by now. Uh, we believe in a year, we can complete the design and we can get the environmental clearance from TechDoc. The, the fifteen point five million dollars, uh, is coming from category seven funding, which is federal funding from Federal Highway Administration. It's coming through the RGB MPO.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Action item number six, consideration and action in supporting the award package from the Department of Homeland Security's fiscal year twenty eighteen, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, grant funding and commitment to non-federal cash match.
Good evening, honorable mayor, commission. Proud to stand here in front of you and, and announce basically through the Department of Homeland Security, uh, security, FEMA appropriated approximately three hundred and fifty million dollars in fiscal year twenty eighteen to fund the hiring of firefighting, uh, activity, to assist fire departments improving staffing levels. Um, a hundred and sixty-two awards went out to different organizations, and the Brownsville Fire Department was one of those organizations. Um, we applied for and received the two thousand and eighteen Safer Grant Award. The purpose of the Safer Grant Award is to provide funding support to fire departments, uh, to fire departments to increase in the number of firefighting, firefighters thereby helping communities meet minimum industry standards and attain twenty-four hour staffing, uh, to provide adequate protection from fire and fire-related hazards and fulfill the tradition, the mission of the fire department. FEMA has determined the city of Brownsville submitted a project consistent with the Safer Grant Program's purpose and a total of one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and fifty cents from the grant program has been awarded to BFD, uh, for the hiring of fifteen new firefighter positions. The program funds seventy-five percent of a first-year firefighter's pay and fringe benefits for the first and second year and thirty-five percent for the third year. The program requires a non-federal match of twenty-five percent, um, the first two years and sixty-five percent the third year. The city's total investment, including the grant match and step and grade increase for additional firefighters over the three years, will cost one, one million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, and this is kinda just a breakdown of where our staffing levels are at compared to other services. There's Corpus Christi, uh, Pleno Fire Department, Laredo Fire Department, then we have Brownsville and Frisco Fire Department, which have similar populations or a little bit more. Um, like I said, the Brownsville Fire Department service is about two hundred and forty-two square miles right now. Like I said, the Bronxville Fire Department service is about 242 square miles right now. And on staff, we currently have 191 full-time firefighters, of which 158 are trained EMTs. Between 2017 and 2018, the call volume for BFD has increased by over 10%. Bronxville's the 16th largest city in the state with the 26th largest fire department, so this is going to help us bring us to a better staffing level. On this, we request, you know, considerable consideration for accepting this grant.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That was great, thank you.
Action item number seven, consideration action on resolution number 2019-086 of the City of Bronxville, Texas, to approve continued receipt of funds pursuant to Section 11 of House Bill 914 and authorizing such other actions necessary to provide notice to the Texas Lottery Commission.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, House Bill 914 requires approval by the local government board to approve continued receipt of the bingo prize fees funds by a majority vote. The governing body must notify the Texas Lottery Commission of the decision no later than November 1st. Failing to meet this deadline will forfeit the entity's right to receive fees generated by the bingo permanently. City generates about $62,000 in the last two previous years of revenues from bingo fees. Staff recommends favorable approvals to continue receiving these funds.
Okay. Do we have any motions?
Motion to approve?
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Action item number eight, consideration action on resolution number 2019-088, approving a plan of finance to issue general obligation refunding bonds to refund a portion of the city's outstanding indebtedness and to issue certificates of obligation to finance the construction of certain improvements and acquisition of certain equipment, and authorizing the city's staff and professional advisors to prepare and distribute all documents and take all actions deemed necessary in connection with preparing for the issuance of such obligations, including the selection of underwriters and the preparation and distribution of a preliminary official statement.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mayor, good evening, Members of the Commission. Noe Inohosa for the record with Australian House Company. Bobby Villarreal just joined us about a year and a half, fully licensed and everything. Today, he passed his final, today's, I guess, today was the final exam or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
All right.
All right. So, now you're, you're welcome to come to Bronxville anytime.
Now we know who to call.
I want to appreciate a day with Michael Ferguson-Horton, Bond Counselor to the City, and I guess Elizabeth and Noel were working with us, and Luke, of course, and Finance, trying to come up with an idea of a plan that you need to, I guess, consider for approval. The very first page is something that we discussed, I believe, back in the summer, where basically we listed for you the number of financing that the city has, and the total of debt that is currently outstanding, where basically you pledged property taxes, and we use sales taxes to pay off some of this debt too. So, as you can see on the right side, that's the graph, your bars that are shown in dark blue and gray is how you pay off this various bond issues. I pointed out for your benefit, the tax rate that you have adopted for the next fiscal year 2020, where the interest and sinking fund is collecting about $25.52. That's going to expect to levy about $17.1 million, yet your payments are slightly over 19, or they were, they were back in 2019, over $19 million. In 2020, they'll go a little higher up. What's important to note, for your interest, is how between now and 2024, your payments are a little high, and then they drop, as you can see on 2025, to about $10 million. So, the question is, as provided to us by city staff, is how can we provide the commission the ability to finance some of this big capital projects like drainage and other capital improvements and not impact the tax rate whatsoever? So, in essence, we took an assessment of that, and what is being presented to you tonight is to basically do the first phase of CIP, and that is to do $4 million for streets, this is reflected on page two, and then reimburse the city general fund for having spent already, out of the general fund, $2,007,000 for three, I think that, two, three fire trucks, I believe. And basically, you will be reimbursing yourself so that you can justify to the rating agencies, most importantly to taxpayers, that you have X number of dollars in your savings account in the general fund. So, $2,007,000 of that, of this money, of this loan, is going to be brought back to the general fund, and $4 million is going to be for street improvements during the course of the fiscal year 2020, 2019 to 2020. You go to page three, and from right to left, there's a real dark bar in the middle of it. Basically, what's on the right of that is how we intend to pay back our mortgage payments, and what's on the left is how we, how those payments come due every year. So, if you go back to the second column from left to right, you'll see annual payments in 2020 of $18,587,998. Then the next payment, in a blue bar, it's $1,554,000, for a total of $20,142,704. And he said, Noel, how do we pay for that $20 million? So, we pay with the tax levy of the 20 cents that we, that I quoted earlier on page one, that levy's about $17.1 million. The difference between the $17.1 million and the $20 million payment comes by virtue of landfill, I believe, transfers, right?
Yes.
And, and sales tax coming from BEDC and Jibic, that is in the blue bar. The first payment for the airport was due this year, 2019, the second year will be this year, 2020, for $1,559,000. So, that's what makes us come in, bring, you know, bring the payment down to about $70,791,000. We levy the $25.51,000, we think you'll collect about $17.1,000, but you have delinquencies, you have late payments that come into that fund, so $70,7,000 gets taken care of out of that tax rate. So, that's as we stand today, without borrowing money. You see various columns in various shades, I think there are six columns in shades, or seven columns, but the last two, the one that says facilities, energy savings 2020 and 2024 CIP, you can literally delete those two columns, they won't, they won't affect us at all. I think what, what's important for you is what's in the teal color, that melon color, which is the fourth column from left to right, that's the $6,007,000. If we borrow the $6,007,000, your payments on page four, the fourth column, which is what you're approving tonight, it's about $472,000 a year, for $172,000. Right after that, you'll see a drainage, a gray column that has to do with drainage. Just recently, you may have gotten a note from the Texas Water Development Board where they approve, you're getting a small grant of about $25,000 for drainage improvements. It is contemplated that this year, the city will access the Texas Water Development Board for $7 million loan. That loan, we expect you're going to get a rate of .51% over 20 years. Texas Water Development Board acts like a bank, and in their bank funds, there is a fund that actually ends you money at .51% over 20 years. And unfortunately for you, you can't get that in the open markets. So, when we looked at $6,007,000, we're using a rate of 342. I suspect that your rate is going to be closer to 290,000, so we're using a nice little cushion there between what we believe is the actual market and what we are here to represent to you. So, I think your payment's going to be lower when we do the $6,007,000. What's important to you, for you to note, is that when you sell those two bonds for the Water Development Board and the $6,007,000, we don't expect the tax rate increase, it won't affect you any which way. But in addition to that, in order to provide staff with the ability to come to you with funding another 30 million, we're going to do a restructuring of some of your debt. I think I talked to you about that in August. If you go back again to page one, you'll see a list of various, of various loans, so the very bottom loan on that column, that says Euro Refunding Bond Series 2010, about $11,155,000. Those loans carry a 3.25%. And we're going to refinance that one probably with about 1.25% or 1.5% loan right now, something a little higher than that, I believe. But then, we're going to take out some other bonds, 2014s and 2011s, I believe, in order to provide capacity. So, in essence, if I were to add another graph after that, page four, and let's say, show you what I have on page one, the graph, the bars that are there in dark blue and dark gray for 21, 22, 23, they're going to drop, so that you can have the ability to stay inside of the red line close to the blue line, so that you can achieve your $30 million objectives. So, when you go over to page five, which is all-inclusive, there's a second melon-colored column from left to right, and that shows you $30 million of new money. The city manager and his staff have been very frugal, I guess, or very focused on how to provide energy savings, or savings for that matter, of some of the facilities, and we're all very confident that he's going to get to tell us that we can probably count about $600,000 of savings, right? Annually, so when that number starts coming through, we will fill in that other third melon column on the right side. Right now, we have a blank, but even though it's blank, we're very, very comfortable that the tax rate will never bust to 25.51, which is where you are today in 2020. With that, if you were to be kind to vote on this issue tonight, we will then, the next item, I believe, after this, is to adopt a publication of notice of intent, where you tell the voters that you're going to borrow through certificate obligation for the $6,007,000, and only for the $6,007,000, in 45 days from now. It used to be 30 days, now it's 45 days. When we do the Water Development Board loan, we will come back to you and refresh your memory and refresh your mind that we will need $7 million, right? Okay? Because we haven't done that, we haven't done the COs for the drainage.
We have, no, sir.
Yeah?
The maximum, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
The maximum amount that we have right now, notice will be $6,850,000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so basically, we came to you with $6,007,000, but we have in the notice $6,850, just for purposes of manipulating interest rates if we need to, but the amount that we think is going to be $6,007,000 or even less than that. So, so we use that as a cap. And again, so when you do that, then on October, on December the 3rd, 45 days from now plus, we will sell the obligations. And we talked to, talked to the staff, and we think that using JP Morgan, the same firm that we use for the airport financing, will be good, and they'll be complemented with another company called UMB. The city will get its funds December the 19th, and that's the plan. So, I'll stop and entertain any questions you may have, Mayor. Members of the Commission.
Mr. Inohosa, looking at the airport monies, the 25 million, that's already been done, correct?
Yes, sir.
And is there any opportunities to refinance or get a lower rate on that? Because I'm looking at the rate, or at the payback over the period of time there, it's a short period, but the interest is pretty high, $15 million on a $25 million loan.
Yes. Well, excellent question. Unlike mortgages, when you and I go out and buy a home or a business and, or a car, we can refinance those notes anytime we want to. Unfortunately, in the mini-bonds business, you have to wait 10 years. And I know you probably, you probably remember that now that I've told you this, but you have to wait about 10 years for you to come into the market and refinance that. And then, in 2017, we used to do it at least once before this, what we call the call date inside of the 10 years, but now we cannot do any of that. We have to wait until the call date 90 days before. In fact, in the refunding that we're doing for you, or this restructuring, the 2000, if I take you back to page one, the 2010 bonds, which is the very bottom, it's got a call date of 215, 2020. You'll see that the very bottom on the right side says 215, 2020. When we do this financing in December, we'll be inside of the call date, so that will be done as a tax exempt financing. We're going to get that rate of 1.5% that I told you, take out the 3.25%. But then, the other bonds that are 2014s and 2013s, I believe, they have to be done on a taxable basis. So, we're going to do two refundings to achieve the same objective, the two little loans, in order to create capacity. So, going back to the airport, the airport was just done back in, as you can see at the very top, at the very top row, you'll see combination tax and airport revenue COs, AMT, $23,110,000. That funded $25 million, and, and you have to wait until 2026 to get that. We actually did, in that case, we did an eight-year call instead of a 10-year call. Good question. But we always constantly monitoring that.
I was just testing you, see if you knew. I was just making sure you knew your stuff.
Oh, well, thank you, that's a good test.
No, just kidding, thanks, thanks, Noe, for the response.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
I will entertain any motions.
Motion to approve.
This is an action item, so...
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Inohosa.
Action item number nine, consideration action to approve resolution number 2019-089, authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipping of various capital improvement projects.
This is a resolution to act upon the previous agenda item, recommend.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we had taken item 10 out of order, so we're done with the action items.
Yes, we will now move on to executive session, which we have executive session eight, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to receive legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to the collective bargaining labor agreement between the city and the duly recognized bargaining agent for the city's law enforcement personnel, the Bronxville Police Officers Association.
Motion to go into executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Okay.
Possible action on any items as discussed in executive session. Action, executive eight, consideration possible action, if any, in response to the last collective bargaining proposal by the Bronxville Police Officers Association with respect to healthcare, base salary, contract term, and related items.
There be no action on this item? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We need to have an actual motion and a vote on it.
Say that again, Counsel?
You, you need to vote on it.
Okay.
They're taking a notice.
Okay.
I'll move to continue negotiations.
Okay, we have a motion to continue negotiations, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.[1744.38]